With our counsel, with our attorney. So it may be a little bit different than what the policy subcommittee looked at. The subcommittee also looked at another policy that we'll be looking at at a future meeting for as a first read, and that's on diversity of vendors that we contract with. So that's the policy update. Any other announcements? No? Okay. Great. So we will move on now to new and continuing business. And first up is our student vaccine. And this, we also have the staff vaccine mandate on our agenda this evening. And I just want to call out, Dr. Morris might be able to explain this a little bit better, but we are not, we as a committee are not considering a mandate. We're looking at, the Board of Health is deciding, they've decided, they're reconvening on Monday with a slightly revised motion on adding COVID-19 vaccine to the list of required vaccines for students to attend school in Amherst. So that, if, if, if they decide that, then our role is not to accept or reject or approve that, that's the role of the Board of Health. Our role is to decide on the implementation timeline for that. So I just want to, I see Dr. Morris nodding his head. So I know in the public comment, there's a perception that we are making a decision on mandating that vaccine. We asked, we inquired with the Board of Health about whether they were considering adding that as a required vaccine. They are considering that. And so our role is to discuss implementation. Dr. Morris?
Yeah, so thanks for sharing that because I think that's something I've talked to the press about, both the student press, very excellent interview with one of our high school students today, this afternoon on this topic, as well as the kind of larger paid media, so to speak. And I think people, once it's explained, people get it, but I think it's just, we're going to have to keep on saying that, that the committee nor I are public health experts who make those decisions. That's why we have Boards of Health. So in the board docs in the packet, I included a couple of things. One was, you know, some information about Los Angeles and their timeline. Another was thank you to somebody in the Board of Health who actually got me Puerto Rico's order in English. It was in Spanish and someone helped me read it last week, but they were able to get a translated version of the order and the timeline for Puerto Rico. The Culver City, which is another place in California that has a mandate of COVID vaccine mandate for students. And also just the language that was voted, I know they're reconsidering, not reconsidering the larger topic, but just working on the language that they're meeting six or seven o'clock on Monday night, in terms of the local Board of Health. So, you know, I think for tonight, I think, as Ms. McDonald said, I think it may be just an initial conversation of where, what people are thinking for a timeline, but I think we want to wait till the Board of Health finalizes their language Monday before, I would recommend that the body finalizes the timeline and some of the implementation aspects. And I think just consistent with, you know, past practice as well as school committee policy, having good discussion tonight is going to make next week's conversation and potential, kind of where we land in terms of timeline better. We don't want to try to do both, all of that in one meeting. So I think tonight, you know, I would recommend that you just have some discussion and some initial thoughts so that you can respond. For members of the public, I think it's just a good reminder too, that the body can't meet in private. So sometimes it feels a little stilted because, you know, this is a big topic, I don't want to minimize it. And it can feel sometimes like, well, haven't they talked about this? Well, actually, they can't, right? They can't get together offline and say, what do you think? Maybe November, maybe February? That's, that can't happen. So for those of you who are watching, you know, who may not be typical school committee watchers, there's a reason that it goes like this, is all the deliberation, you know, as the larger body happens in public. Sorry to do that kind of disclaimer, but I think it is an important one on this one. And why, why would we take multiple meetings? It's because this group hasn't been able to talk about it since the Board of Health voted.
That's a helpful reminder. I think even, even as committee members, we forget that too. And not, don't forget to not talk about it out of the meeting. I mean, just forget that while we're in the meeting, part of the reason why we come back multiple times of things is because we don't talk about it after the side. It's easy. Any comments, thoughts? Anybody want to get us started? Mr. Demling?
So I mean, I'm, I'm happy that the Board of Health added this to the list of vaccines. It's, I mean, it helps us discharge one of our core duties, which is keeping staff and students safe. And fully approved FDA vaccines help prevent hospitalization and death. So it's, it's not much of an argument in my mind as to whether we ought to do mandates. It's just about implementation and the timeline. As far as the timeline, I mean, my feeling is as soon as reasonably possible is, is how I would frame mine. And if, if we were to go on the earlier or the later edge of that, I would want to try and push for the earlier. What we, we happen to be at a point where vaccines, we're very fortunate to be in a part of the world where vaccines are immediately available. You can, you can literally walk in anywhere, or not anywhere, and a number of places and, and get that. So it's, it's not like, it's not like we need to afford, you know, multiple weeks for, for people to scour the internet and get an appointment. It's, it's not an issue right now. And so I think we ought to take advantage of that. I think we probably want to try and get ahead of, of the winter as much as we can. So obviously, there's a bit of a balance. You know, we don't want to place undue burden on, on families who can't practically achieve it. So I wouldn't say it should be mandated effective, you know, the day after the Board of Health meeting, but I don't, I don't want to get like, like January 1st, 2022 seems a little too late to me. So this is just my initial feeling.
Ms. Spitzer?
I guess two questions. And again, given that we're not public health experts, I'm not sure. Looking to Dr. Morris, but maybe there are other people who might have the answer to this. So I believe the FDA authorization of the Pfizer vaccine, that kind of moved it out of this emergency use status into a fully approved vaccine was only for 16-year-olds and up. And so I was curious if, first off, how the, will that change at all, our implementation, if it's fully FDA approved for one group of students in our district and not a slightly younger cohort? And then also looking to think about, when we're thinking about implementation, there is going to need to be a process for handling religious and medical exemptions. And I think we want to make sure that process, that the folks who are going to be implementing that process have the time to put in place the procedures and, you know, iron out the forms, make sure that we have a good, robust process in place. So I think those are the two considerations that I agree with Mr. Demling. Like in my mind, it would be great if, if we could get this in place as soon as possible for protecting our staff and our students. But I also want to respect that maybe some parents would want to wait until it's fully FDA approved and also the staff are going to need time to create the processes to make sure this is in place. And because I'm assuming it's the schools, it's going to be handled the same way as other vaccines, and maybe those processes are already in place for students. That makes sense.
It's, it was my understanding that the way the Board of Health's motion is written is that it's only, it applies only to students for whom there is a fully approved, fully FDA approved vaccine. That, so it's not mandating it for all students, it's for all students for whom there is one. Dr. Morris?
Yeah, so I think, I think Ms. Spitzer tried not to editorialize, just to respond to your question, but I think, I believe that some of the reason Los Angeles and some of the districts did put their timeline a little further out is going on the guiding assumption based on public reporting that at the time at which the vaccines are due, it'll apply to students above the age of 12 and above. So in other words, instead of having two processes, one for 16 plus and then one for 12 plus, it'll likely combine those, right? Who knows if the future will hold, but I think there's a lot of public reporting that makes an assumption that the 12 plus will be fully approved sometime in the next month. So I think that was, I think what you were getting at for the first one. And actually, the exemptions are a little bit different. We did get some legal advice from counsel that there are some, how to say this differently? The degree to which we can scrutinize exemption requests is a little different with employees than it is with students. So, you know, I was hoping we could use exactly the same kind of forms and documents. And I believe we'll have to scale down somewhat on the student end based on the information we heard. And certainly we'll work with him on that. We're not, we're not at the place of doing that yet. We're trying to get the, the staff one done. He's been working with myself and Doreen Cunningham on that. So it will need a little bit of time and process along that dimension. I think the other thing is that trying to offer opportunities for education should also be a part of this. But I think to Mr. Demling's point, and I'm not trying to be wishy-washy, I'm just trying to share, you know, my perspective is that 85% of our students are vaccinated. We're talking about a relatively small number of students, or at least small percentage of students who are vaccinated, and some of them may be unvaccinated. I know some of them are unvaccinated because we've heard it directly from students, they would like to be vaccinated, but there are some medical considerations that are at play. So, you know, I mean, I think that's the, the sort of the balance is how many processes do you want to set up? And, you know, the front end is collecting either CDC cards or doctor's notes, hopefully a little plug for sending a copy of your CDC card to your doctor because that's a good thing for them to have. You know, that's going to take a little bit of time with, with 1,400 students at the region, 85% of which are, you know, already have received the vaccine. Just there's some logistics that take a little bit of time when you're talking about that scale.
Maybe this is naive, but is there a reason why the exemption process itself would be any different for this versus the standard battery vaccines?
No, that'd be very similar. Yep, yep. A little, which is different than the staff end. I'm getting a text just for people to know that at some point, a couple of minutes ago, there was a little short bit of time that Amherst Media missed, but I am recording the meetings, hopefully they'll be able to splice it back. But they're asking me to share that with the public.
So sorry, on that, then what, then I guess my question is, is what new process? It's more a process of verifying whether somebody's been vaccinated and just cycling through that as opposed to creating the process?
Yep, no, 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 that's a better way to put it. Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, thank you. Ms. Kenny?
I would just like to make a request that if this does come to fruition, then we can work with the town again to do another, we did what, an open house, where, or not open house, those are not the right words, like a forum, I guess, where we were able to provide information and have good conversation with people who had more questions. And then to also, to work with the town again to do another clinic, because I think that worked, worked well the first time through. So to do those two things.
Dr. Morris?
Yep, so on the, the information event, Ms. Spitzer's been helpful and I think we'll have, won't only be about vaccines, but I think it'll definitely touch on them, you know, sometime early next month. So we'll get information on that soon. And it's helpful frame because I think some of the vaccine piece was the anticipation of, of ages five to 11, but, but I think more generally, you know, 6 billion doses have been delivered. I think there's actually fair bit, fair amounts of data, in my opinion, about vaccine safety. And, you know, there's a lot, it's not just like, oh, we just started doing this. We've, we've now months of, and billions of doses delivered around the world. So I think, you know, maybe having more information on that would be good. We could talk to them about a school-based clinic, but one thing they have done with us is that at the Bang Center, which is easily walkable for students from school and timed really well, four to six every Thursday, they've been offering clinics. So, you know, we could talk to them about doing a school-based, but they're also encouraging us because transportation, you know, if there was a student with more mobility challenges, we could provide that. But it's easily walkable and the timing's perfect for middle school and high school, and they're offering them every Thursday. So we'll see if that's not sufficient, but I think it's pretty, pretty good. And I know students have done that since school started, kind of over on Thursday and, and received the vaccine. So we appreciate the support from the town and, and if we need to do more, we'll do more, but I think that's, it's a pretty good start.
No, that's great. I didn't know that that was a, that was a thing. So that's, that's excellent that it's already happening and the Bank Center is super close. So that's great.
Mr. Samo?
You know, once the exemption process is all straightened out and clear, it seems that we just need to, that seems to be one of the holdups in a timeline. And I would say if the administration is ready to go, either six to eight weeks seems like a reasonable timeline from my point of view, you know, when, when everything is set to proceed.
Any other thoughts on implementation timeline? Ms. Kane?
I thought January 1st, I mean, I'm not a school nurse, so I don't really know what the paper process looks like, but January 1st sounded pretty reasonable to me. But I just wanted to add in that we should make sure we have supports for undocumented students.
Any other thoughts or comments, Mr. Demling?
So, Dr. Morris, just kind of a question on, so this, this idea that we have, or this, this logistical challenge, that we have a fully approved one for 16, 18 right now, and we anticipate soon that the 12 to 15 will come. If we, if we know that we're going to have a lot of administrative work to do anyway, right, to just to collect the fact that people are vaccinated, like you said, 85% of people are, students are already vaccinated, would, wouldn't that be an argument for starting earlier? So because it's going to be the same process presumably, other than perhaps the, the due date for 16 to 18 than it is for 12 to 15. And so we sort of, we sort of get rolling with the students that we know we, we are eligible for an FDA-approved vaccine. And then when the next age group becomes eligible, they just fold in. And then if they, if they have a later start date, then obviously there's a later due date for them. But is that, you know, never having run something like that through a school, I know I'm not talking from a place of experience, which is why I'm posing the question to you, as to whether that would be, I mean, is that, is that an efficient way to look at it or am I completely off base?
It's generally easier, Occam's razor, to do things once as opposed to do it twice. I don't think it's a barrier that's insurmountable to have a 16 plus and then a 12 plus, but when we send out one communication, it's really clear. It doesn't leave a lot of places where like, you know, the invariably questions we'll get. Well, my kid turned 16 on December 1st, where would that, like, there's all these what-ifs, and you'll sort of get those on 12 plus, but it reduces the number of kind of logistical headaches. It's logistical headaches we can deal with, you know, but, but it is easier to do things once because it's often, well, you're sort of having the work to a certain extent, you're not really, because it's just easier to do in one full swoop. We get all of them in, we analyze all of them, you know, you know. So it's a bit inefficient to, to do it twice, but, you know, if that's where the committee is, it's something that I feel like we can do.
I, I could sort of go, go either, either way on that. I understand the, and share that sense of like, well, why not sooner? And just practically speaking, knowing that 85% of our students are vaccinated anyway, I'm not sure what, how much of a gain we get for that extra potential confusion or inefficiency. So I guess I'll just, I don't have to decide tonight, so I'm, I'm just ponder that, like, how much is that going to get us more, just practically speaking? Any other thoughts? As, as we said, we're coming back to this topic on Tuesday. The Board of Health is meeting again on their revised language or adding language on Monday evening. So we'll have clear guidance or direction at that point when we meet on Tuesday. Anything more? Not seeing any. Okay. Great, thank you. So we'll move on to our next item, which is the staff vaccine requirement. And that revised policy is in the, in the board docs deck. It's called DT COVID mandate policy. And I can speak to, we can speak to the edits that the policy subcommittee made. And Dr. Morris, maybe you can speak to the ads that attorney, our attorney made. So the policy subcommittee added a couple of things. At the beginning, we wanted to, we, we pulled in some of the just like global principles that we saw in the Newton policy. So that first sentence under purpose, we added that, the district is committed to providing a safe environment. We also added that clarification or that detail, I should say, in a few spots about working in close contact with students. So you'll see that under scope. So contracted personnel working in close contact with students in art school buildings. And then under 3A1, that first line, all school personnel and contracted personnel who work in close contact as defined by public health officials with students in art school buildings. And I think that that's the only other place at that end. And we also, because of our, because we're talking about this today and not a week and a half ago or two weeks ago, we changed the date to November 15th from October 31st. The other bit that we changed, the policy subcommittee changed is under the exemptions process, which is item G. In the third line, the district shall create a clear process for reviewing and granting exemptions that requires clear documentation to accompany any exemption requests. So we added that complete sentence to what we reviewed last week or last time. Ms. Spitzer, did I capture everything? Do you think that we, this isn't a marked up version, so I'm just, I'm going, like, trying to compare across documents?
I think that's it. I would just, so the cultural belief that was added not by the policy subcommittee, but by the, I'm just, some of the edits were ours and some were, I'm assuming from the district or the administration.
Yeah, maybe before, so Dr. Morris, maybe you can walk us through the attorney changes?
Yep, so we worked with Assistant Superintendent Cunningham and our counsel on a couple other changes. So one was just to more clearly define what fully vaccinated means and also to be explicit that that could change some point in the future, because we want the, the document to have longevity. And we also wanted to be a little more clear because I think there's, we didn't want there to be any questions about what, what we're intending in terms of the definition at the current time of being fully vaccinated. We talked about, you know, that they're free of charge, and I think much on the student side, I think we can't say that enough, that, that, you know, cost is not a barrier. We may, as I noted, run clinics, but with the town, if they continue their Thursday afternoons right downtown, it's a pretty accessible site. And they have actually all three vaccines available. So for staff members who do, you know, all our staff members are of an age where they could choose which vaccine they would like to get. We feel like that, that's a pretty good model. If we need to shift it for an individual or a small group, then we can do that. Had, there was a couple of things that Mark felt, our attorney felt was extraneous, so we pulled them out and shortened a couple of things. We were more explicit on the, for folks who do get exemptions, about the limitations in terms of can K94 masks, staying 10 feet distance when the mask is off. So we thought it was important to kind of not say that that is the only things that would happen, but in the short term, if you get an exemption, it's not that you're fully, those other things still apply, right? Their health and safety for, for the employee, but also for their colleagues and students. And I think the last thing is we, we worked some on exemption policies that are not in the packet because those would be subject to impact bargaining with our bargaining units. But, you know, we, we did talk about some distinction between religious and cultural that, you know, I think I mentioned last time, that there is a group of staff members who met with me who have a particular cultural challenge as it relates to some of the history of vaccines and some members of our community and the larger world, or larger country, I should say. And so did work with our attorney on very lengthy exemption forms that would need to be filled out. That's, I want to be clear, it's not philosophical belief. That's not something that would be accepted, but it does address some of the, some aspects of culture that could contribute to someone filing exemption. Just because you file an exemption doesn't mean it's automatically approved either. But they're, they're multi-page detailed exemption forms that are not easy to, they would not be easy to be casual about, I'll put it that way. So we feel like we're trying to address kind of the concerns we heard from staff in a way that's fair and equitable, given, you know, where we are in the history. I think, you know, with our staff vaccine rate over 80% as well, I, you know, makes me feel very comfortable about where we're sitting right now, and we want to get that number higher. I'm not suggesting we don't, but it was trying to address the multiple needs of the district that way. So those were the primary changes that Doreen, Mark and I worked on, that we had the same date. So we'd sort of loosely talked about November 15th, so gladly that wasn't something that needed to change because the policy subcommittee and our, our group agreed on that as well. And I think it's worth noting about the, the bargaining that, that, you know, in Mark's opinion or attorney's opinion, this is subject to impact bargaining, the impact of the mandate. It's not the impact of COVID, right, or anything like that, but that it is a legitimate subject for bargaining. And if this passes, we will very quickly initiate dialogue with our bargaining, six, seven, seven bargaining units to try to move as expeditiously as possible on this.
Thank you, that's helpful. Comments, thoughts from the changes, the amended policy? Mr. Harrington?
Yeah. So I'm kind of hung up on a part, so, um, I guess, I guess I need clarity on the, so the clear documentation, right? So if I have a cultural belief, though I clearly document that, that's one part, like, I mean, I guess, I suppose I personally could, like, my, you know, my family's from two towns over, from Tuskegee, Alabama, and my father was born in 1935. I imagine I have some sort of a paper trail from that. But then the, the other part I'm kind of hung up on is like, are we legitimately asking people for documentation of their religious beliefs? Like, is, is that kind of what we're?
Dr. Morris?
The exemption form, at least the draft one, ask them questions, it doesn't need to be signed by a religious leader, but ask them questions such as, what is your religion? Has your religion prevented you from getting vaccines in the past? What aspect of your religion prevents you from getting the vaccine? So it asks questions, but in terms of documentation, it's trying to understand better what is someone's religious beliefs and why would their religious beliefs be a barrier for that? It also, all of our exemption forms require, in terms of documentation, that there's a conversation between the employee and their physician, not our, like, it's not like we need to have the district physician be involved in this, that talks about the benefits and potential challenges of the vaccine. So that education piece is, is baked in, but it doesn't require someone to get a religious leader to sign off, so to speak. It really does inquire and ask, you know, for us, it wasn't, it didn't feel sufficient just for someone to write a one-sentence note saying, because of my religious beliefs, I am applying for an exemption from a vaccine. We did need someone to clarify what those are and how those influence, you know, their life. We wanted folks to be able to take it seriously because there are folks out there who do it. What we're trying to avoid was the more casual approach of, I really just don't want to get the vaccine. more casual approach of, I really just don't want to get the vaccine. And potentially this is an avenue to avoid that, and I want to keep my job and uh avoid that dynamic. But so, so it doesn't require, again, a signature from any other person. Um, it just requires an explanation as to how the religion impacts them either getting or not getting the vaccine. Does that sort of answer what you're?
Yeah, 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 because I was gonna say, like, like in my mind, that it, it could have gone one or two ways, like, like, give me like a certificate from like, like a rabbi telling me that I, or, or is, is the explanation on paper good enough? And so that, you know, it definitely answers my question. A lot more comfortable with that.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and I think the other thing is we did note that um if a staff member, if written communication around this is a challenge and they could also request to meet with me or Doreen um to talk through, because, you know, for some, for some folks, the written communication makes a lot of sense and there are some folks in our district who um that may be more of a barrier and it's really just about the information. Right? And then being able to assess, is that information valid? Is it accurate? Does it contribute? You know, does it seem like a honest uh description of what's actually going on here? Which is a very hard thing to judge, but that's why me and Doreen and Mark will work on that.
Other um comments on the um revised policy? Mr. Deming?
Yeah, so I, I appreciate the work that the policy subcommittee did on this and um and our attorney. I mean, I'll be honest, this isn't a perfect version in my mind of what I would like to do. Um, but I think it addresses a number of the concerns that have been brought up. I, I, I definitely like the phrase um and, and what we've described as clear documentation for any exemption um in my mind is, is an, is an absolute must, whether we're talking medical, religious, cultural, or, or otherwise. You know, because uh, and, and I'm I, I, I'm comfortable with asking that for religious exemptions because it's, it's, it's not like we're asking um ARP's HR the medical exemptions to be medical experts, right, and then pass some medical judgment. In the same way, we're not asking ARP to be religious experts and then pass some religious judgment. It's all about, you know, wanting to make sure that, that this is an authentic process and um and I, I really, I, I feel like, you know, asking that, it, it, it you know, the free will goes both ways here, right? Like, we, someone can say, I, I don't feel comfortable sharing this information. And we can say, we totally respect that, that's, that's totally fine, but this is now a requirement for working in close contact with children because of the seriousness of this disease. Um, I, I think that's reasonable. Uh, it would, you know, I, I, and I'm sure that there will be, you know, if, if we're gonna be really, oh, oh, you know, eyes wide open about this, we, we, we may lose some staff over this. We may lose some good staff who have sincerely held beliefs. And, you know, that would be unfortunate, but I, I feel like the situation calls for that. So, I mean, I would be comfortable supporting this policy.
Other comments, Ms. Spitzer?
So I, I'm struggling with the addition of the cultural belief section and I I, I'm curious if this is going to I, I guess the reason is, I, I think in general the eighty-five percent rate is great. If the, it only though, like, if my kids every day coming in contact with the person who has, you know, has an exemption and is unvaccinated. It's putting that my child and a lot of kids in our schools, I know this, the problem is, this is the policy we're setting for one district, uh, but it'll trickle down to other districts with more kids who are um unable to be vaccinated right now and the timelines for that um are uncertain right now. There are also people in our district who will probably, you know, never be able to get vaccinated for medical reasons. So I guess I'm, I'm wondering if we could balance adding exemptions with adding additional measures to protect those who are most vulnerable in our community. Because I can understand not wanting to lose really valuable staff members who bring a lot to our team. Um, but I'm also would be very upset to learn that one of those folks who had an exemption had, might have been. I know nobody means to, but, but, you know, I have a close family member this week who, who came down with COVID. So, um, you know, I, I think it's important that we protect people. So I don't know if testing would be a way. I don't know if finding accommodations to put that staff person who seeks the, an exemption temporarily into a, you know, a position. You know, maybe until the point where all of the vulnerable folks are able to access vaccines. Like, we're, we're kind of in this point where not where the youngest members of our community aren't yet vaccinated, but hopefully they soon will be. So I'm just wondering if there might be a way to balance this desire to make sure we don't lose very good staff with a desire to protect. Because I don't want to get into a situation where, like, I don't know as a parent, I don't know who my kid is coming into contact with and how closely they're coming into contact with that person and what their vaccine status is. And I don't really want to get in, like, I, I, that's not my place to know, but I do want to know that the district is doing everything in their power to protect my vulnerable child who is going into school and not currently vaccinated. Um, and I'm, have a feeling there are other members of our community who share that point of view. So anyway, I'm just putting it out there, like, I don't know if you're, have ideas about when we implement this, if we can increase protections for those folks, because I think randomizing the number of exam, the number of people who are in our district who are unvaccinated is my top priority.
Sorry, can't get the unmute button. Dr. Morris?
So testing, I think I addressed earlier, I, it's not going smoothly, right? But that's certainly something we could uh potentially include in here. You know, I think we already have the protections of K ninety-five masks, of ten feet distancing when masks are off. I think if there are other protections that you are interested in, I'd certainly open to that conversation. And I think we balance that with, you know, the fact that we are not fully staffed at the moment. We're still hiring, right? And so um, you know, there, there's a reality on the other side of that, that, that I think is complicated as well and you know, it's not easy. I, I also want to note and knock on wood, I don't want to say this thing and then uh, eventually it may not be true, but we have no evidence of school-based spread for all the cases we've had, you know. So I think our, the ventilation, the masking, the distancing is showing that it's working because we certainly have had, you know, a number last spring and then this fall with Delta uh, of positive cases. And we've had lots, not lots, but a fair number of close contacts. And to date, none of the school-based close contacts have tested positive. And so um it's not that I disagree with this policy or moving forward, but I think it has to be balanced with, I think, the evidence we're seeing in our schools in our classrooms. I'm much more concerned, as I said the other week, uh, about student-to-student spread. I am about staff-to-student spread. Um, when we have a student who tests positive um, or a staff member tests positive, it's, it's, there's not many close contacts that cross that threshold between students and staff members. By no means am I suggesting that I don't support this uh, the policy or the approach. I think it's really important and staff can infect other staff. It's not just about kids. So, I mean, I, I, I get everything you know, that you're suggesting, Ms. Spitzer, and I think there's other measures to be take, to be taken. Uh, I'm very open to them, but I, I, I do think we've tried to build in supports for exemptions, whether we all think they're the right exemptions or not. We're gonna have some exemptions, right? You look at, you know, major university, a couple of miles up the road, and they're like ninety-four, ninety-five percent of staff um, because there are, there are exemptions. So we're never gonna get to a hundred percent, or I don't believe we will. Um, so it's a matter of what are the kind of strategies we should use and at what point does losing more staff actually make us less safe? Right? Um, and, you know, the calculus on that is hard. For instance, if we don't have enough staff to support our students and the other staff members are taking on more responsibilities, at what point is that safer, right? And, and this is kind of wasn't gonna go down this road, but Carrie, your question, you know, maybe bring it up. I mean, my, my lay example is uh, just because it's, it's it's a cheap one, but it's a real one, it's tangible, is, so if pretend a district lost five bus drivers. So what happens is, we don't have bus drivers to replace those drivers, so we put more kids on a bus. Would it be safer to have an unvaccinated driver who's never close contact, because they're never within, you know, for an extended stretch, close to a student? Uh, or is it better to have kids cram three to a seat throughout the bus? Right? I'm not trying to pick on bus drivers here at all. It's just, it's a more tangible way to talk about it. And I think that same phenomenon plays out across the district. So do I want to encourage vaccination? Absolutely. Um, but I think, you know, like every other district in Western Mass, we're having a real labor shortage. And um, that's a very real thing. So I think we're trying to balance those two very uh, those realities. And, you know, I think Doreen, Five Star, you know, Rupert, uh, in his department, um, Human Resources, we're doing more outreach than we ever have. And yet, um, we have vacant positions on September twenty-third. And so do other districts too. Uh, the number of, you know, my conference calls with those superintendents, this is topic one A, is staffing. Um, and particularly as we tell staff members and students not to come to school if they're not feeling well, given the COVID, um, the capacity to fully run our schools um is a real challenge here. So you know, I'm happy to do whatever the committee wants, you know, and will implement it, but um the staffing shortage we face uh, and the measures we take make this conversation in reality a little more complicated. And I'm not trying to critique your, your comment, Carrie, because I've heard it from others, and I think there's a lot of legitimacy to it, but it's not quite as easy as, oh, if people leave, we'll just replace them. That, that's, that's not what any district in Western Massachusetts is experiencing right now.
I think for me, that's, that's, that's the challenge is, is like, again, that, that I like the, the example that you just described, Dr. Morris, because that's, that's you know, well, by staying so focused on getting as close to a hundred percent staff vaccination as we can, we may be unwittingly creating some other situation that practically speaking, doesn't really get us where we're hoping to get with a, a vaccine mandate. And I, you know, when we think about sort of the layers upon layers and, and, and sort of the multi-layered mitigation strategies, I think um, this is one very important. So again, I'm all in favor of this policy and, and support that and want as much vaccination as possible. At the same time, it's one of many, many other layers of um, of risk mitigation that we have in place. And I, and I think, you know, are we, are we pushing the needle too far by being concerned about some of these exemptions? When the, the the benefit or the gain of getting that is going to be minimal, given the high rate of vaccination that we already have, right? So are we, um, are we, are we risking by pushing so, so far to remove some of those exemptions or making them so, so burdensome? Would we be eking out maybe one more vaccination, but at the expense of some of, of losing other folks versus um, where we are right now? And I think, I, I think sort of very pragmatically, I'm grateful at, to the amount of vaccinations both our students and our staff have gotten so far. Um, that we are very, very high. We're in a very fortunate situation. And I think if we can, if we can nudge that a little further, great. Um, and I'm all for that. Um, but at the same time, I think the, the downside risk of pushing too far um, is very, very real for not a lot of benefit, incremental benefit. That's my two cents on that. Um, Mr. Demling? Actually, before Mr. Demling, is there anybody else who hasn't spoken yet would like to speak? Miss, Miss Dancer?
Um, I think maybe it's more a question I have. So in this section where it talks about the exemptions and um to maintain, have those individuals who might receive exemptions maintain a safe work environment. And it might include additional prevention and control measures. Does that mean that wearing a mask would then be required or some other thing would be required? The way this is wording, worded, that's, that's not clear to me. If that's, maybe we would do it, maybe we wouldn't. Because if you're going to have other measures besides the vaccine, then that is going to continue to decrease the possibility for infection. Without, you know, if you've got grant, so I guess my question is, is that a maybe? Is that a yes? That's what we'll do?
Dr. Morris?
That's what we have in place now. The reason that the legal counsel advised us to not only say that is exactly for the conversation now. The committee or the administration may over time have additional mitigation measures it wants to use. So it gave the administration, you know, the ability to implement additional measures as needed. You know, I think, I think the legal counsel's advice was, you want to list the ones you're doing now? But not preclude that you might add more later. Um, and so that was, that was the thinking that um Mark offered.
Okay, I, I understand that and I, I, I like that, that way.
And just for the, for folks watching at home, as a reminder, what Dr. Morris is referencing is that we have a requirement in place right now, the district implemented that um, that anybody not vaccinated must wear, must wear these masks and stay ten feet away. And Mr. Stammel, did you have your hand raised?
I think that clarifies it. I was gonna say, it, it read to me that it wasn't mandated for the, uh, the K ninety-five and ninety-four masks. It seems, it, it, the language just wasn't that clear to me that if somebody's not vaccinated, it seems we would mandate that they wear the upgraded masks. I'm not sure that's what the language says. It's same thing that Margaret was saying.
Yeah, it, I, I think what we're getting at is the difference between policy and, and process and implementation of the policy. So the policy is written to say that if you're not vaccinated, they're gonna, there will be other requirements for you. And then, so, but it leaves the room for sort of whatever is, there may be, you know, there already is a mandate in place for unvaccinated staff. Um, and there may be more um that, that, you know, that we learn about. And, you know, public health guidance might, advice might be um something different. Um, and so the policy is intended to say that only that here's, if you're not vaccinated, there's going to be some accommodations and requirements for you. Um, and in implementation is when those, those accommodations would be decided. Um, Mr. Demling?
Yeah, so um, so I appreciate these, these comments. So particularly Ms. Spitzer's comments have, have given me pause about where I felt initially. So my, my preference for this is to is to digest what I've heard tonight and, and to vote it Tuesday. I, I would like to very soon, you know, make a decision one way or the other, um, exactly which way we're going, because it's the time bound. Um, so, you know, I actually don't think that the bus driver example is a good one. Um, they're already exempted from the policy at the top because they're not in close contact. Um, and that, that's the example that was being used to justify this risk of losing all these employees with, with the bus drivers. And we, we, I'm not dismissing that we have a bus driver shortage. That problem is real. But this exemption policy doesn't affect that at all. Um, so unless, unless we have some sort of evidence or strong indication that without this cultural belief exemption, which isn't legally required, uh, we're gonna suddenly lose dozens of employees, I, I don't feel like the, the argument is justified that that being as strict as we legally can be on exemptions is going to negatively impact our employment posture in a significant way. Um, you know, the other thing is, I don't think that um getting one more staff person uh, or two more staff people vaccinated is, is a minimal uh, gain. Even if we had ninety-nine percent vaccination rate of our staff and our students, you know, we, we have staff who work in close contact with students every day. We have special needs students. We have special needs students who are immunocompromised, who have one-to-one aids. So it, it really doesn't matter from an individual student's point of view, what percentage, um, I shouldn't say it doesn't matter. It, 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 it does matter because of transmission. But, but if one staff member isn't vaccinated, then it really matters to the students that they're working with. So, and I think, I think I said this at our earlier meeting, but, you know, my, my feeling is, is that we should only offer the exemptions that we're legally, legally required to. It's not because I don't respect and understand the very real religious and uh, cultural uh, and other sincerely held beliefs that are not based in religion or culture that people have for vaccines. It's, it's that we have a, an employment need, a, a, a service posture where because, in order to avoid It's, it's that we have a, an employment need, a, a, a service posture where because, in order to avoid hospitalization and death for our students, we, we, we need to employ people have a certain safety level. And, you know, I, I would be sad to lose people over this, but I, I think, I think it's, for me personally, that's, that's where I would like to be. I, I, I'm hearing we don't have unanimity on that at the moment. And so that was why I initially came in here saying, well, okay, as long as we're strong on the documentation, we can be broader on the, the exemption scope. But, um, like I said, Ms. Spitzer's, uh, comments have given me pause and, and I'd like a bit more time to just sort of ponder that. And hear from the public too. And I think we've only heard from us, um, a narrow view from the public so far and, um, perhaps, you know, we could hear from more, more people on that.
Can I ask a, a question on, as sort of staying on this, this, this concept of the close contact, the, the one-on-one para? It, I mean, an accommodation, um, could be also working with a different student, right? And I mean, when, when we say accommodation, it isn't only these, these things. It could also mean, um, a different job assignment. Is that correct? Like, Dr. Morris?
It could, but, you know, um, I, I think, I think I was using the bus, bus driver analogy, you know, more meta, you know, philosophically, I mean, the other area that I'm really concerned about that we're, we struggle with is exactly the example that Mr. Demling shared, right? So is it, we are struggling to fill and we're working really hard and we're getting progress to, you know, special education paraeducators. Um, if we lose a set of special ed paraeducators, I will tell you bluntly, there's not a, a huge supply of those folks to replace folks we lose. So, you know, I do have concerns that, um, would we not follow IEPs, uh, and not be supporting, uh, our students of special needs? If we get more narrow on our exemption policy? I get the, the close contact piece and, and they're in some ways they're more, that population is most likely to be close contact. They may be working with students who cannot work, wear a mask because there's more incidence of uh, medical behavioral exemptions from wearing a mask in that population. But if we have nobody to replace the people who leave, um, I'm not sure that's better or safer for anyone. Um, and so, you know, the bus driver was like an easier tangible uh, example to use, although Mr. Demling rightly notes that it wouldn't apply in this situation. But I think the same could be, could be thought about as it relates to special education paraeducators. Uh, again, we're working our hardest to try to fill those roles. I can tell you right now, those roles aren't all filled and we've been, you know, creative in our staffing and we're, we're getting closer, but, um, you know, I was talking to a colleague of mine who, they're just like, they're stopping even trying to hide, hire paraeducators in their district. Uh, their paraeducators are significantly, we'll get to this in a little bit in terms of APA piece, but um, not as well compensated as ours was even before this latest contract, um, that you all are considering. Uh, because the, the, the labor market is such in Western Massachusetts where, um, it's a real challenge. Um, it's a challenge for other institutions as well who have people in similar roles. So, you know, I think that's where we get into safety, uh, when we, if we're not fully staffed in a way where we can support students who have special needs that I think that makes it less safe for them, uh, than the scenario. And, and, and I'm sorry to be as the harsh reality guy tonight. Um, but I do believe that's a, a very true reality. It's not that I don't want to encourage more people and I thought that if you look at the forums and I'm happy to share the, the drafts with the committee that Mark put together, they're not casual. They're not like, oh, you just fill the box here. You check this, you check that. Uh, they're serious forums. We will lose staff with the, the policy as, as presented tonight will happen, but I am worried about the scope. And I'm also worried just very bluntly about, we've worked incredibly hard to diversify our staff. Um, and as Mr. Harrington noted, there are, are some folks in our community, some members of, uh, folks of color who, um, have historical reasons to perhaps ask more questions and be more concerned. And it's really geared towards, um, making sure that we're trying to honestly have that conversation with folks. Uh, and be able to understand that there is a historical legacy. Uh, and it's an unfortunate legacy, uh, because I, I think it, it, it plays out really negatively for lots of folks, uh, in our community and well beyond. I think there's a lot of evidence of that. Um, but at the same time, right, trying to balance all those variables is, is not easy. So, you know, I, I wish we were in a place where, um, perhaps a harder line, I mean, I've been saying I'm pro-vaccine since before the vaccines came out, right? And I've got the virtual tomatoes to show it, right? It's, I, I get it, right? And I think the public comment tonight clearly is not aligned with my comments over the past, um, year on this topic. And, and, and I'm happy that people feel enabled to contact me directly to make public comments. I really, I'm, I'm being quite serious about that. Um, at no point did I, does it make me question my belief that vaccines are keeping our employees, our students safer, right? Um, there, there's no, there's no gap between the opinion of, you know, public health experts who are advocating for this, the president who's advocated for this and, and where I am. Uh, and then the practical reality gets a lot more complicated. Um, and it's trying to balance those two variables that, you know, we come up with this. Again, if the committee feels that we want to take a harder line, that, that's certainly, you know, we'll work with that. And I'll just give, you know, more regular updates on, you know, the potential implications uh, and challenges that maybe I'm over-exaggerating, but, um, I tend to be anxious when we think about staffing and the staffing needs and, and particularly when I talk to my colleagues, uh, with or without a COVID, uh, COVID staff max, uh, COVID vaccine mandate for staff who are struggling. This is, this is topic number one across the state, right? Um, you see the National Guard being brought in some places around Ban. I had someone say they should come and bring those in to do the work of the health folks from CIC to support pool testing. Um, you know, I think there's larger labor forces at work. And I'm, you know, honestly quite appreciative that our, our labor force has, is highly vaccinated. I think some of that's good education. I think there's been a lot of work within our member unions to encourage each other to get vaccinated. Um, and some of that's just based on social relationships. The more I've read about, um, COVID, uh, folks who are questioning vaccines, it often is from a friend or a trusted colleague. Uh, I'd love it if it was just going to the doctor and it was that easy, but for many people, they, they want to talk to someone who's not a medical expert uh, who can describe that. And I think our staff have really pulled together with that. And we still have staff getting vaccinated, just like our students. I gave that data earlier. Sorry for this long soliloquy, but this is, you know, I just think, and I'm not trying to, to characterize anyone here's comments, but it's, it's easy to have a, a, a very well thought out, very reasoned, um, perspective on the benefits of vaccines. I'm with you. And then I'm trying to balance that out with, uh, the other reality, which is what I see. And how do we support students 180 days a year with the proper adults in the building, um, to make sure that they're, they're, they're safe and making effective progress. And they're, unfortunately in Western Massachusetts right now, those two things are perhaps in a bit more conflict than we'd like. Uh, from my perspective and my colleagues' perspective in other districts. And I think that's, that's sort of the balance. I've seen some districts, uh, put in things where, um, basically no one loses their job until a replacement is found. Um, and when they're doing staff COVID vaccine mandates, which again, sounds okay. And then you think of the reality and Mark, our attorney brought this up is like, well, why wouldn't they just leave for a different district? If they know once their replacement's found, they're going to have to find a new job. Like it, it's again, one of these things that sounds pretty good and, and makes some logical sense, but I don't think it actually addresses a larger issue around the labor force. So, sorry to, I'll, I'll stop talking. I just wanted to, you know, explain my rationale. And again, you know, certainly am happy to uh, go with the committees, uh, where the committee is on this. And I really understand folks who would hear my comments and be a parent of an autoimmuneized, autoimmune compromised kid and say, what is he talking about, right? Like I want the safest environment possible, uh, for my child. I think that's a completely legitimate viewpoint. I think safety is less cut and dry than it would be if there were infinite supply of staff. And that's not our reality at the moment.
Are there other folks that haven't spoken yet that would like to speak? I'm also looking, um, uh, I don't, there's a, there's also a proposal not to vote tonight. Um, we, we had talked about a, a possible vote tonight. So I'm curious also to hear where folks are feeling if, if, um, uh, there's desire to vote tonight or not. Um, Mr. Stammel?
I would like to vote tonight.
I'm looking at others that have not spoken, um, if anybody would like to speak. Um, so, uh, there's, there's a, need to hear from other folks about sort of desire to move forward on a vote, uh, this evening or, um, to take more time. Ms. Dancer?
Um, I could vote tonight.
Ms. Kenny?
I, I think if we have people that feel like they need more time to process and think about this, then we should honor that. This is a big decision. Um, and we're meeting on Tuesday. It's less than a week from now. So, um, if, I, I think if there are people who feel like they would like more time to think and process, then we should honor that request.
Okay. Uh, we will table that. Um, and unless somebody is making a motion, um, we will table that to, uh, Tuesday. Um, moving on to our next item, uh, we have the, uh, contract extension um, for two of our unions. First up is the APEA, which is, um, our teachers, our union of teachers and paraeducators. Um, the document that's been approved, um, voted and, and approved by the APEA members is attached to the agenda item. Dr. Morris?
Do you want to just walk, walk folks through it just for a quick bit? Cause I know this has obviously been talked about. No surprise as an executive session, but we haven't talked about it in, in public session. So, uh, this is a one-year extension without a significant change in language. Oh,
I'm sorry.
My, my mistake. Yeah. Um, as my wife is an employee affected by the APA contract, I'm going to disconnect from the meeting and then I'll rejoin you, um, when notified.
Thank you. Ms. Dancer? You're muted, Ms. Dancer?
Um, I am in the same position as Mr. Demling. I have a family member employed and, um, so I will, um, leave for the time being.
Thank you. Dr. Morris?
Sorry about that. I got ahead of myself. Um, so, um, this is a one-year extension of the existing contract. Um, that was, that expired on June 30th. And the only change to the contract is financial. And you could see that the unit A wage increase is 0.6%. The unit B contract, uh, wage increase is 1%. And the unit C contract, uh, wage increase is $1 an hour, which is a more, much more significant. Um, it depends on where people are on the scale. So I can't give you an exact percentage because it really varies if you're new or if you're veteran, but it, it's a significant salary increase for paraeducators. Um, you know, I do appreciate the APA working, uh, collaboratively with the school committee on this and, you know, went back and forth. It took, uh, it took a little while, but I think we landed in a place that is, um, fair. Um, and I, I want to say publicly, I appreciate the APA's dedication and commitment to increasing the salary uh, of the three units. That's the lowest paid unit. And, you know, I think that is admirable and just want to compliment them for their uh, focus on that. And, um, this was ratified by the APA. We were notified last week. So if the committee does vote on this, uh, we'll get the signatures and it'll be implemented um, as soon as possible within the next week or two. I also want to thank, uh, Ms. Lord and Ms. Kenny, our negotiating team for their work on this as well.
Yes, thank you. Um, and just to clarify, the, the increases that are outlined here are the cost of living increases. Um, there is also the step increases that, um, that were not part of this agreement. Those are in addition to. Any discussion? Then I will, uh, move that, uh, we approve the memorandum of agreement for the contract extension with the APEA. Is there a second?
Second.
Move by McDonald's, second by Kenny. Let's take a roll call vote. Um, Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Mr. Stammel?
Stammel, aye.
And McDonald's, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you again, um, to Ms. Kenny and Ms. Lord for your tireless work on this and, and patience. And next up, I, I don't know.
I just emailed, uh, Ms. Dancer and Mr. Demling, uh, just that we were. I don't know if they're checking their email. Um, if someone has their text, I can certainly text them, but.
I will text Mr. Demling while we're, um, moving on to the next item, which is the contract extension with the UFCW. Um, and that's a vote to extend the existing contract that we have with the UFCW. And I presume since there's no document, there's no amendments or changes.
Well, um, we were notified that they have not yet ratified the, uh, revised or the contract. So I think we're, we'll have to table this one on this well. I, no one should read into that. I think it just was, you know, accumulating the documents, sending it out to their membership and voting takes a while, particularly in, in COVID era times. So, um, I don't, I, I have no reason to believe that that's any, um, indication that this won't be ratified by its members. It's just, I think they're, um, they're working on it. Um, and so, uh, we can come back to that topic when we hear back from them. But I think it is worth reminding folks that we do have a tentative agreement. Um, with that, uh, negotiating group and as soon as the negotiating group lets us know that it's been ratified, we'll bring it back to the committee for a full vote.
Okay. Thank you. So we're, um, going to skip that, uh, that topic then tonight. Um, and move on to our next item, which is our guidance for superintendent goals. And this is a carryover from um, our last meeting, um, when we didn't get to this one. So, um, I reattached that same document, um, in there. This is, um, Ms. Dancer as vice chair and I worked on pulling this together based off of this similar document that we created and used in terms of, to facilitate our conversation and discussion and giving guidance to Dr. Morris for crafting, um, his goals for the year. Um, I'm sorry, I'm just pulling it up. So, um, just, just to go over, the first page is just a recap of last year's goals. That is not, um, so that is intentionally 2020, 2021. Um, so just as a reminder and benchmark for us to, to, um, to see what we had as superintendent goals for the prior year. Um, and when you get to the second page, one of the principles, um, guiding overarching principles that we had discussed a year ago, um, and Ms. Dancer and I are proposing that we keep these priorities, um, or principles this year is one, to wherever we can to align, um, our goals across the three to make the effort more manageable, um, within the timeline of this year, and particularly in a year like this year, which is continuing to, um, uh, deal with the, uh, impacts of the pandemic. Um, and so that gets it sort of managing the scope. Um, and then the other one is that there's a, uh, not all top priorities or projects, um, or important responsibilities need to be defined as a goal every single year. Um, so we divided, similar to last year, divided up between initiatives and projects that have defined end results and timelines, as well as, um, overarching or priority values and themes that are higher priority every year, even if we don't actually explicitly call them out into, uh, a distinct goal for that, that particular year. Um, so this is intended, I think it's marketed as draft, really as a starting point to facilitate our conversation. This is by no means meant to be something that we approve or disapprove, but really just to start the conversation. Um, and just for, for process, we use this conversation tonight to talk about what we, um, the, basically the guidance, but what our expectations are for, um, Dr. Morris's goals for this year. Um, after this meeting and with, with our input, Dr. Morris then will draft, um, a set of goals. Um, that he will work on this year. And at our next meeting, um, that's what we'll be looking at is those draft goals and, and discussing that. And then finalizing that, um, those at the next meeting. So this is. So this is a three-meeting free conversation process. Again, for folks just to connect the dots all the way through, the goals are what we use to to evaluate the superintendent on at the end of the year. Thoughts, comments? Ms. Dancer, I don't know if there was anything you wanted to add to my mumble.
No, I think you did a pretty good job, Allison.
Mr. Stammel.
Yeah, I don't really understand what the first guiding principle means. Align. It's just that I'm, you know, a little ignorant about these. Align goals across three districts to make total effort more manageable and achievable. I don't really understand what that means.
Thank you for asking that question.
I'm sorry.
Because it's it's not clearly in how it's written and so it's clearly written with a front by a group of people that are deep into this. So Dr. Morris is a superintendent for three different school districts. The this is the Amherst Regional Secondary Schools, so that's one district. He's also superintendent for the Amherst Elementary School District and the Pelham Elementary School District. And in some years, each of those three districts, school committees will draft their own goals. And so we could have upwards of, you know, 12 to 15 goals in a given year. Right? So so the idea is to try to find some alignment in there. There's going to be unique ones that are unique only to those, an individual district, but to wherever possible, to find some alignment to keep sort of his total goals across the three school districts manageable.
Thank you. That's much clearer for me.
Thoughts? Ads? Nobody speaks up. I'm going to call on Ms. Spitzer because in in another committee, she had some ads that I that I think might, in thinking about it, might be worth considering in for the regional district as well.
So I was holding back just because I had spoken so much at the last one, but I wanted to, I'll do the, I'll try to look, going back to my notes. So and some of them were Amherst specific, so I'll hold back on this. But first off, thank you for putting this together. I think it's helpful and really I strongly support this idea of keeping our goals aligned across the three districts. The the things that I called out as things that I think are important to us, and as I said last time, this isn't saying that they're not already happening in our district, but I think they rise to the the level of being called out on this document. So one was thinking about how our district is addressing the climate crisis, both, you know, not only from the technical standpoint of things like, you know, putting potentially putting solar arrays over over parking lots, but also thinking about how we integrate, thinking about the those challenges into our curriculum and kind of a broader integration also with the four towns potentially, so that our our district is working across the region to try to address the climate crisis. Then, you know, I think that could also intersect with potentially increasing outdoor education. I think the other thing was kind of calling out, and this again might be more specific to to the other district I'm on, but I did mention, you know, trying to bring in, calling out the arts in in the in the goals and also to try to connect movement to some of this well-being goals. So whether or not, you know, mental health is tied also to our, you know, the mind-body connection. So that, you know, movement is tied to mental health and if we can find ways to increase that in our district as we move forward. So I think that's everything I said. Feel free to add if I forgot anything.
I I think about the movement comment in the context of the the region and the middle school in particular, because for those of us that were on the committee last year, you might remember the public comment that we received from some from this one or two students at the school, asking for more opportunities for movement within the middle school day. And so I I think, you know, it's important, particularly also when we're thinking about connecting that also with the sixth grade goal. Other thoughts? Mr. Demling.
Yeah, so I like Ms. Spitzer's suggestions. Looking at this from a regional point of view, I'm not totally sure that sixth grade is worthy of a goal level for this fiscal year at the region. I mean, it's, we're definitely going to have to, if if one of our extending districts decides to do this, the region will definitely have to coordinate because we're talking about shared space, potentially shared personnel and whatnot. But but the the region isn't expanding to sixth grade, right? Like the sixth grade would not be in the purview of this committee. And so, you know, like defining the model, certainly, you know, in terms of space utilization, you need to interface with regional personnel, but in terms of like finding the model and talking about what you want to do with sixth grade, seems like a very important goal for another committee. And and maybe maybe it will rise rise to the level of a of a goal, depending on what the timeline is for that decision, if that decision is made as as the implementation logistics get there. But just just something to think about. I mean, I don't feel super strongly, but it just seemed like something that was maybe a little early for for the region. You know, one one thing that I wish we could get on here without overloading the list is is something about social emotional wellness and and support for the kids now that they've returned from the pandemic. We we talked so much last year, right, about the the emotional impact of of this and wanting to really focus on that when when kids got back. And I'm sure we're doing that, but but I'm just trying to think of why, maybe it's it's tying in, you know, efforts and supporting the arts and movement and and even even climate justice, which is an activist, you know, interest. So these kind of non-academic interests that engage kids in in different ways that are can maybe support them in that way. I, you know, I'm just kind of riffing a draft off the top of my head there, but but something that could kind of focus that a little bit. And if we had to drop something off at at a goal level, maybe the the Ezra Funds thing. I mean, that's really important to keep track of, obviously, but maybe doesn't have to be like a a project-y type goal at at this level, but just some thoughts.
Yeah, it's interesting. I think that I was I was actually thinking that that the the comments that you just talked about could be actually combined and and sort of morph morph that stimulus funds one to encompass that. Because in thinking about that, it's not just about managing the funds, but thinking about them in the way. So a year ago, we had that goal that was about, just scrolling up to see what it was. But it was, you know, what are the, we called it the COVID Changes Goal. So what what are we learning through the through the year of COVID that we might want to carry forward or might want to learn and adapt for future years? And it was a similar thought process with the stimulus funds is how can, what are the ways that we can use the stimulus funds, not just to deal and address with the the issues of the pandemic, but also how do we rebuild and set ourselves up in and accomplish things that can set us up for resilience and and, you know, set a strong foundation for for the future? Because we don't, we don't, we don't usually have those kinds of funds. And so it could be wrapping that into sort of that mental health, well-being and sort of reimagining that. And Ms. Kenny, did you have your hand up?
I did. So I guess I'm a little confused about the sixth grade. If they move to arms for any sum all of the elementary districts, then they will not be part of the region and then they will still be part of the elementary districts? I'm I'm just confused how that works. And I feel like, I guess I was under the assumption that if sixth grade was in the middle school, which is a regional building, or then they would be part of the region. And therefore, something we should probably be paying attention to. I guess I'm just confused about how the sixth grade happens between all of that.
Yeah. And Dr. Morris.
Yeah, I actually, so so I find in this comments really helpful and and clarifying. And I'm a little worried going too deep into Ms. Kenny's excellent question because I think it it's on the agenda for Tuesday. And, you know, I'm not critiquing the question. I think it's actually super important. And I'm actually wondering if, I'm not trying to curtail dialogue, but I wonder if, based on the feedback, which was pretty substantial already, if there's some folks who want to try to tweak the document and then we talk about this since we're meeting so soon. Because I think we may be able to have a more full discussion after some of the items are talked about in the natural flow of the agenda. Because I'm thinking of the non-Amherst members and what Ms. Kenny just said. And there's been conversation with one with the Amherst School Committee, just very bluntly, that would inform some thinking and even if you're not an Amherst School Committee member, I think that that content might affect how you think about this. So I don't want to be, you know, dismissive of your comment at all, Ms. Kenny. I actually just think we need to dig in on that for you all to think about what the priorities and goals are.
Right, right. Now, that makes a lot of sense. I think we don't know which, you know, which way things are going because the decisions are happening at and the discussions are happening at the elementary districts sort of this year. And yet, depending on where that goes, there will be work, whether it's purely an operational logistics rental agreement work, you know, and how to and managing the capital to sort of enable one, you know, one town to send their students to to the building. You know, the nature of the goal will will be dependent on the decisions that are are made, but there's going to be significant work regardless, you know, depend if if only if at least one of the districts decides to send their students. But I like the idea of continuing of tweaking that and sort of coming back to that on Tuesday. Any other thoughts on any of these? The the goal that's listed that has Amherst in parentheses at the end is one that would not be a region goal. That would be a region, an Amherst-only goal, just to be clear. That's not one that we're talking about here. Yeah. Well, we just, we're, we'll, we'll come back to it on on Tuesday and continue talking about that specific one. And we can weave in some of the comments from Mr. Demling and Ms. Spitzer on on those. Great. Next up is our subcommittee roles and assignments. And this again was a carryover from our last meeting that we didn't get to. So this is in the in the packet is the spreadsheet, which is very, I'm looking at it now. It's very tiny on my screen. This is actually almost the same spreadsheet, just with slight tweaks from when we talked, when we worked on our subcommittee and advisory committee policy in the spring or June. Yeah, that's much bigger. And so in the changes that we made in the in that policy was that we created a distinct separation between standing subcommittees of the regional school committee and then advisory committees. And the the key difference between them is that the standing standing subcommittees' membership is limited exclusively regional school committee members. Advisory committees may have other members of the community, whether staff, students or other community members as part of the advisory committees. And those are one-year, one-year terms with reappointment every year. And and with a specific sort of mandate from from the regional school committee. And so this spreadsheet looks a little different than what we looked at before because we've put the standing subcommittees at the top, moved everything else into either tasks and roles, because we do have a whole variety of of individual jobs, if you will, or responsibilities that members, individual or pairs of members of our school committee must take on throughout the year. And then we have the one advisory committee, which is the school equity task force. So we did not do any reorganizing last year and none of the 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 subcommittees met, I think, sporadically or as on an as as-needed basis because we were meeting so frequently as a full committee. The policy subcommittee met this week and has scheduled, is is at least scheduling to try to get back to the monthly meeting format. And so we set dates for every month through through June for the policy subcommittee meetings. That's our, the current membership is listed there. And the budget subcommittee, we combined that with the audit subcommittee to create the budget and audit subcommittee. And I believe that's your current membership. Ms. Spitzer.
So I'm going to make a comment that seems very personal, but I think it could benefit everybody. Which is just that, so like, it it seems like the distribution isn't great. So I would be in favor of potentially thinking about redistributing especially. So I know this is unique to me. I'm not, I'm not running for reelection. So I'm on all three of the standing committees. And I'm a little concerned that when there's a shift, it might be good to have some ability to pass on some institutional knowledge to future members of those while I'm still on the committee. In particular, the superintendent evaluation subcommittee. So if somebody would be interested in taking over that role for next year, and I know that there are shifts, you know, we can't, nobody has a crystal ball, but I am 100% certain that I'm not going to be on on the committee when the superintendent's evaluation is going to be happening in in the spring. So and just in general, I think it might be good, as somebody who, like I, I think it would be good to try to spread it out more. I don't know how I ended up on all three of those standing committees, but I would discourage anybody else from doing that, unless you really, you know, enjoy spending your meetings on Google Chat.
The, one of the things that we've talked about with, well, in staying on that, if if there were others that were interested in joining the policy subcommittee, I personally wouldn't mind stepping off of that and might be interested in joining the budget subcommittee, but not as not as chair right now, at least for the next, through the through the election, until we reorganize, a lot on my plate. But the policy subcommittee would be helpful to have representative from Pelham, only because what the typically, when the regional, when the regional committee votes on policy, it it automatically applies to both the Amherst School District as well as the Pelham School District, unless the Pelham School District creates its own its own policy that then is noted as as a Pelham-only policy. The, so right now, there's nobody from Pelham on that committee and it just seems like that might be of interest for the our reps from Pelham to join that. I don't think we wrote that into our requirements, though. And Mr. Sullivan isn't here, but he noted in at our last meeting that at least the original incarnation of the superintendent evaluation subcommittee, they had representation from from all four towns. I don't think we've had that in the last three years. I'll look to Ms. Spitzer for that, but yeah, yeah. Ms. Dancer.
So I did participate a little bit on the superintendent evaluation subcommittee this past year. So I did participate a little bit on the superintendent evaluation subcommittee this past year. And I, I'm willing to continue to do that.
Great. Mr. Demling?
Um, oh, I mean, I don't know if I'm going to be next year either, but I'll, 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 I'll join any one of the standing committees that wherever, whoever needs it. I'm a warm body. Put me wherever you need it.
Um, so it's getting late, so my, um, request would be, um, that everybody take a look at this and then email me, um, your, your preferences, um, for what you would like to sign up for. Um, and then we can talk about that at a, at sort of our next, um, conversation. I feel like Tuesday is getting pretty stacked up, so it might not be the Tuesday meeting. So, um, I, I, so I won't ask you to email me before Tuesday. But I will follow up with everybody. Okay. Next up is our future agenda planning. And so we've mentioned multiple times that we're meeting on Tuesday. That meeting is posted. Um, but there, uh, we can add agenda items. Um, I think we just added, we're going to come back to the staff vaccination, staff COVID vaccine policy. Um, and we're going to come back on the superintendent goals guidance on Tuesday. Um, we also have, uh, our converse, our discussion on the student vaccine, um, implementation, COVID vaccine implementation pending the, the board of health meeting on Monday evening. Um, we're going to update and discuss sixth grade to the middle school. So, um, it'd be great for, uh, each of us from member towns to share the conversation, if any, that's happening in, in your, uh, elementary districts. And the policy first read on the vendor diversity is also on the agenda. We'll also have an executive session at that meeting to go through all of the minutes, um, that we have for the past 14 months of executive sessions. So, um, there is a lot. Um, folks have been, um, sending me any edits. And that's great because my, what I'd love to do is have all of the edits in there so that when we meet on, in executive session, we're really just reviewing them and not going through line by line, change this, change that, add this, right? So if you have the opportunity over the weekend to do that, that would be great. Uh, Mr. Stammel?
Slightly off topic, accessing the meeting. I had trouble tonight. I used the links that I was sent, uh, by Sasha and that, those didn't work. So I just wanted to make sure that I could access the meeting.
Do you go into the calendar appointment? Cause that's how.
No, I don't. I use the, uh, the e- it's, it was emailed, you know, the, the list of emails. We, we got, uh, received twice from Sasha, um, the meeting links. And that's what I've always used. Ruby and I ended up alone together on the, on the links that we thought we were supposed to use.
Dr. Morris?
I don't use any calendar.
Yeah, I think because there was a meeting tonight and a meeting Tuesday, my understanding is that you may have clicked on the Tuesday meeting and the reason you were there is because it's not Tuesday. Um, so.
I, I didn't tell you it was.
Okay, I got a notification that someone was in the meeting Tuesday, so someone on this call clicked in. It might not have been Eugene.
Might have been then.
No, no, it might not have been. Um, but, uh, certainly it's something that, uh, we can follow up offline. Um, you could just reach out to Sasha. No, no, you could reach out to Sasha and she could work through any, uh, any scenarios that played out awkwardly and I apologize for that.
Okay. Um, our next meeting after the 28th is on the 12th of October, so that, um, uh, we will, that, that will be when we'll come back to the subcommittees. And I see, yeah. Dr. Morris is already actively, um, editing the, our, our, our working document here, so. Great. Anything else on future agendas? No. Okay. Next is, um, warrant report and, um, that's, uh, Ms. Spitzer signs warrants for us. I have two, so hopefully it'll be. They are in the, um, in the board docs.
Oh, they are now?
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay. Well, I've got them.
We put them there. I was like.
Okay. Um, and you know what the problem is? I don't have, I'm logging in this public. So anyways, here we go. Um, I, Carrie Spitzer, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $480,877.23 for the warrant dated September 10th, 2021. This included general fund expenses of $472,639.60, revolving fund expenses of $8,168.63 and other funds in the amount of $69 for stabilization. This was signed by me on September 13th, 2021. I, Carrie Spitzer, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $89,165.21 for the warrant dated September 21st, 2021. This included general fund expenses of $44,851.7 revolving fund expenses of $17,820.13 and grant fund expenses of $26,494.1 and I signed this on September 21st, 2021. That's it.
And next up we have, um, gifts and there is an attachment on the board docs. I will make a motion that we accept the following gifts. From Stop &amp; Shop A Plus Rewards to support the middle school principal discretion in the amount of $938.40. From Anonymous to help another family dufray athletic participation fees in the amount of $231. From Friends of Amherst Football Boosters, number 91 for, to support athletics headsets in the amount of $672. From Patricia Farrington, number 3005, to support ARPS Family Center Backpack in the amount of $50. From the Amherst Club Inc., number 1578, to support ARPS Family Center Backpack in the amount of $200 for total cash, total of $2,000, what, $2,091.40. And to accept the following grants from Amherst Education Foundation to support Restorative Justice Program Summit in the amount of $3,505. From Amherst Education Foundation to support STEM Virtual Tutoring Center for grades nine through 12 in the amount of $10,500. And from the Amherst Education Foundation to support strengthening A R H S Tier Two interventions by Funding Academic Achievement Center, AmeriCorps member, in the amount of $9,000. And from Dick's Sporting Goods Sports Matters Foundation Grant to support the athletic program in the amount of $1,000 for a total grant total of $24,500. Is there a second?
Second?
Moved by McDonald, second by Stanser, and we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Mr. Stammel?
Stammel, aye.
And McDonald, aye. Ms. Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Oh, sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm going off my list and the, Dr. Morris?
Just, uh, very briefly, um, Patricia Farrington, Trish Farrington was a longtime teacher at Fort River School who retired. And anytime I noticed someone who, uh, did a great job working with students in our district, who continues to give back, I think it's worth noting. And this is one of those instances. So thank you very much, Trish.
Thank you. And thank you to all the gift givers, um, and just the motion passed unanimously. Um, and last up, who would like to make a motion?
I'll move to adjourn the regional school committee.
Second.
Moved by Spitzer, seconded by Stammel. And there's no discussion, roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Mr. Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Mr. Stammel?
Stammel, aye.
Sir?
Stanser, aye.
And McDonald, aye. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Bye, everybody.